March 4th, 2025, Regular Board of Education Meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Sandra Bradford.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister-Lazari.
Here.
Katie Carum.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Diana Clopton.
All right, we do expect Diana to come in at any minute, but please, for now, let's rise and give the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, by the way.
Thank you again for your patience, as we got a little bit of a late start. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Winkelman, because we have a special speaker tonight.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so at each of our board meetings, we have the pleasure of having one of our students provide a report and an update from their perspective from their school. And tonight, we have 8th grader Tyler Bullos from Station Campus, who's going to give us a middle school update. So Tyler, thanks for joining us. Floor is yours to give your report.
Station Middle School has been nothing but an amazing place for me to grow, learn, and experience new things. It's a school where I feel supported and encouraged to try my best, and it's helped me become more confident in myself as a middle school student. From academics, activity, clubs, and sports, I've been fortunate to experience all of that at Station. Looking ahead to the next few months, I'm excited about all the new opportunities at Station and my transition to Barrington High School. I'm looking forward to the upcoming school events at Station, like trips or special activities where I can spend time with my friends and make new memories before we all graduate. I know these next couple of months will be full of fun, go fast, and expose me to new challenges that will help me keep learning and growing at Station and beyond. Although I have made new connections and friends at Station, it's exciting for me to think about reconnecting with my elementary school friends from Grove. They all went to Prairie, and I was the lone one from my friend group that ended up at Station. That experience on its own challenged me to persevere and start my own path. Although it wasn't easy to feel connected to a new school, which did have familiar faces, becoming a part of the Student Ambassador Program in 6th grade enabled me to be part of a growing community at Station. It has helped me be more responsible, accountable, and made me feel a sense of belongingness. When Mrs. Schramm invited me to join, I did it, and I never looked back. I feel so much pride for that, for being a part of that program, and I believe it helped me a lot, and I hope to share that pride with others, too. What makes Station a special place to learn is the strong sense of community and the way everyone supports each other. Like I previously mentioned, the Student Ambassador Program is one of those cool opportunities to be involved. Getting to meet new students coming into the school and welcoming them and helping them to not feel alone and remind them that they have a friend at the front door of our school. I've been able to give tours to new students and parents at parent night, but recently, I've had the opportunity to attend a student leadership field trip to the Holocaust Museum, where I learned about the events and how it affected the variety of cultures. I'm Armenian, and that was one of the affected cultures that I could learn more about through that field trip, too. I feel lucky. At Station, the teachers are passionate about what they teach. They always find ways to make lessons engaging and exciting. One highlight that comes to my mind is a recent science project. I love science and always have since having Mr. Thorpe. He's awesome, as well as Mr. Bryson. But recently, in Mrs. Stangren's class, we worked in groups to design and build a working model of a PFD, Personal Flotation Device, and it was so cool to see everyone's ideas come to life. I've always enjoyed hands-on learning, and this project really helped me understand the concepts better. It wasn't just about getting the project done, it was also about collaborating with my classmates, solving problems together, and feeling proud of the final result. Mrs. Schramm, our counselor, is a big part of what makes Station so special for me. She's always there to listen to us, offer advice, and help us work through challenges, both inside and outside of school. Whether it's talking about school stress, personal issues, she creates a safe space for students to feel heard and supported. I play competitive soccer year-round and had to miss school for national tournaments over the years, and she was helpful for keeping my teachers up to speed when I was away. Although Barbara Rose is my home school, I attended Grove Avenue School because I was in the Spanish Dual Language Program, which I am fortunate to have continued that at Station. Mrs. Larios and Vivasca's classrooms have felt nothing less than like a second home at Station, because I've had them both as teachers for all three years at Station, and they get me. My sister had them, too, but now she's in high school. They all get all of us and treat their students just like their own family. It's a real special place to have that dual-language connection still in middle school. I will never forget either of them, and I'm so thankful for them encouraging us to keep strong in our Spanish language. I don't have a lot of time to participate in school sports because of soccer, but I have to say that the athletics program at Station is strong. We have many students who want to try out for sports, which says a lot. Everyone is encouraged to try out and feel included. I was lucky enough to participate in 6th grade track and 8th grade basketball, even though I have soccer as my priority. The tons of track coaches and Mr. Westman, my basketball coach, were very flexible and understanding. I appreciate all their inclusivity in giving me that opportunity. National Junior Honor Society was new to me this year, and I'm proud to be a part of this program offered at Station. It is definitely going to be an honor to be in it with my fellow classmates, and because of it, I've gotten involved in volunteering my time. For example, recently, I volunteered at the district STEM event and was able to observe elementary students learn along with their families in challenges and experiments. I loved STEM at Grove, and it was fun to be a part of as a volunteer helper. As I am so grateful for being here tonight and this opportunity, I hope that you can feel how great of a community Station Middle School is, and it's been to me, and hopefully to other students, too. Station is not just about academic learning, it's a place where you can learn more about yourself, and you can find yourself through all that Station offers. The teachers and staff want you to be the best version of yourself and will support you. That's what truly makes Station a one-of-a-kind place to learn. Thank you.
Tyler, that was a really, really informative report, and I think it, you know, it speaks to all of our students have done such a wonderful job just helping highlight and, you know, make more visible the things that occur every day in our schools. But I really enjoyed your report, because you touched on some things that maybe we haven't heard in prior reports that do occur, like we've got objectives around transition, and it's also about students transitioning into our schools, like being the new student, and programs like the Ambassador's Program have not come up before. We talk about rigorous academics, but we also talk about making sure we're really addressing the needs of the whole child, and that social-emotional part, and the connections with our middle school counselors, and how our counselors serve in that capacity, too. So thank you for really giving us some additional insight in your report tonight, as we know you're well done.
Thank you. Very well done. It's a little bit of a trip down memory lane for me, as I heard all those teachers' names, and thank you, Mrs. Schramm, for your extra encouragement in putting him into the Ambassador Program, as I know you've been doing for years now, so appreciate that. Very long time, maybe one of my own children. So, I mean, you shared so much. Is there any other special thing you might want to say about somebody that's here tonight to see you?
Well, I want to thank my aunt and uncle, as well as my cousins, for coming along to support me.
Very good.
Great.
Very good.
So are you planning on trying to do soccer in high school, or is your competitive soccer going to?
I'm not really sure, because my coach brought up the topic, and he said that if we want to do high school, if we go back to our, like, competitive season, we won't really have a spot, so I'm not sure.
Tough one. Decision, tough.
I feel you on that, Tyler.
Tyler, thanks so much for that 360-degree view of Station. So, you know, there are some students in your situation, too, where, you know, a lot, like, their friend group goes to Prairie, and you're the only one at Station. Can you talk a little bit more about what helped you? I know Student Ambassador was huge. My daughter just joined this year, and she's really excited about it, in addition to Donut Day that you... But could you talk about, a little bit about what helped you in that transition, and how you intentionally help other kids that you see coming in that might not know as many people, just like you did?
Well, what helped me is we did a lot of icebreaker activities to get to know people, and based off those, you can also relate with others, trying to find people that share your common interests. And also, things that have, like, helped me help a new student out is letting them sit at, like, your lunch table, meet the people that you're great friends with, so maybe they can be, too.
Awesome. So intentionally inviting people to eat with you, and that's awesome.
Yeah.
The district is trying to look at how to help kids transition from elementary to middle and middle to high school. Do you have any suggestions for us?
Maybe, I'm not really sure. It's time to help them open their lockers, because lockers are very difficult for young students.
That's a good one. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tyler?
Do you know who was the principal at Station, maybe just like 10 years ago?
Mr. Alfs?
Correct answer.
Or Mr. Alfs. Dr. Winkelman was there, everybody here, so.
13 wonderful years, and I love both middle schools.
He's a continuous learner.
That's right. That's right. Well, thank you for joining us. That was an awesome report. We have a tradition that we take a photo together, and we have a certificate and some Barrington 220 swag. So thank you for joining us tonight. How about another round of applause for Tyler?
Welcome.
All right. Next up is my report. As they exit, I'll again reiterate that I was impressed with Tyler. I loved how he talked about gaining confidence and being eager for new challenges, and just a great example of empowering personal excellence in every learner. I wanted to let the community know that on February 18th, the board did hold a self-evaluation, where we did discuss and confirm our board's norms and expectations of, communication expectations of each other. We also made a slight update to the website on the board page, so we can better find the link for the parents and guardians of communication guidelines. In February, I also attended the large district board president meeting with IASB. We had an executive update, included some items that we've already been working on: Vision 2030, Title IX. We also talked about the COSBA conference that's coming up this month, and talked a little bit about the Department of Education status. And I have some links that I'm going to send to you guys that I just got this week from ISB, from some listening tours. Actually, maybe I'll just ask you to put it in your weekly. I'll give that to you, put it in your weekly. And then we also talked about what was on the minds of the board presidents, and so we spent quite a bit of time, actually, on security in school buildings and shared with each other some things that each of the districts had been doing. And again, this is all the large districts of the state of Illinois. And then just a reminder that I will be attending the IASB regional meeting on March 12th to accept our governance award, and I have to say, the place to be this week is the District Speech Tournament, which is going to be held March 10th through 12th at all of the elementary schools and middle schools. So if you're interested in attending, maybe reach out to the individual school to find the times. And that's my report. So that brings us to public comment. We do have several people here, so we've come to the portion of our meeting for public comment. The board values your thoughts and opinions. We will ensure that all voices are respected and heard in accordance with our board equity statement that states that we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. The board has agreed to the rules set forth in the policy in which the public commentators have agreed to abide when they signed up. And a reminder that this is a board meeting that occurs in public, and it's not a public meeting. Public comment is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the board. If any comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Winkelman to follow up and report back to the board. All right, so with that, Erin Linville.
It's my first time, so I don't know where to go.
Right there. Where's the speaker?
I'm sorry.
We took it down for the photos.
The photo op.
Sorry. And you can just, it will find your voice. Maybe a green light over here.
Well, superintendent and members of the board. Okay. Hello, superintendent and members of the board. My name is Erin Linville. My kids attend lines in Station. I'm part of a group of parents that emailed you in January about some concerns for student learning time. I'm also a school district administrator and have led the calendar, school calendar there, for 10 years. At your next meeting, you will vote on a proposed calendar for school year 2627. A key change in this calendar is no school Thanksgiving week and starting two days earlier in August. I'm wondering how our family and student input sought on this decision. The calendar committee is composed of all 220 staff, and the change in the calendar is significant, and family should weigh in. This relates to your priorities of personalized learning and community partnerships and communication. Based on my experience, I believe the district should not start two days early in August and should instead prioritize more continuity of learning during the school year. If this district would take away one of the four-day weekends in October or November, students would gain two days of learning during prime learning time. Frequent schedule changes are disruptive for student learning and can be dysregulating for our most marginalized students. This would require adjustments to one of the teacher days, but it can be done, and I have ideas. Second, the early release day for school conferences in March 2027 should be a full learning day. Prior years, calendars didn't have an early release for conferences, and the teacher's contract doesn't require one. Barrington teachers have more time than other districts for professional learning and family connection. They have five staff in-service days, one or two full-day conference days, four early release days, and 36 early dismissal Wednesdays. I'm disappointed that the district made the decision in prior years to reduce student learning time by introducing the four early release days without asking for family input, as far as I can tell, and without verifying that the minimum student learning hours were met on those days. Please consider how to bring more voices to the table on the calendar and other important things that impact the student experience. For the calendar, you could slow down the process right now. Your board policy states that the calendar needs to be approved a year in advance. You still have six months to lead a more inclusive process that gathers input from all stakeholders. I would be happy to help the district think about how to position these options to the community.
Thank you. Kylie Humbert.
I'll wait until I get called this time. Nice to see you guys. Thanks for having me. As I've come to speak at so many of these board meetings, I just hope to continue to shine a light on special education, on some things we're doing really right in some areas of opportunity, because we can always get better at all times. Today, I wanted to chat with the board about essentially what we, in the biz of advocating for special ed, you know, we call it like an opportunity gap or an achievement gap, and this is, this concept of like an achievement gap has been in place since the 1970s. Achievement gaps are nonpartisan, okay? So Republicans, Democrats, everybody decides that, hey, there are certain standards that need to be held. Because we're so fortunate to live in Illinois, the standards basically are established, and Barrington 220's job is to adhere to those standards. And we historically, as a district, have always been told, we do a great job. We do do a great job in a lot of ways, but I would question if the board has taken the time to go ahead and parse out different groups to identify if there is an achievement or opportunity gap within certain populations. Why does an achievement gap matter? First of all, and I believe it's like in our framework and all of our missions, we need equity in education. Large achievement gaps indicate students with disabilities don't receive, or different abilities, don't receive the same opportunities to succeed as their peers do. They lack future opportunities. We have a legal and ethical opportunity, and then obviously, social and emotional development is a part of this as well. I'm going to forward you guys a document later tonight with a bunch of numbers and charts that I've pulled from ISB, because I love data, and I think that if we can tell a story using good data, it'll help us, again, identify where we need to make changes. So I'll send you guys this chart, and I went ahead and pulled all of the different districts, like, our union contract essentially cites who our models are, right? Like, who do we, who do we look to for who's doing things right? So I went ahead and pulled up Lake Zurich, Elmhurst, 200, Naperville, Agonquin, all of these. And when I pulled the data for our marginalized groups of IEPs versus not IEPs, okay, at the high school level, so for anyone listening at home, or for you guys, high school students, okay, IEPs versus not IEPs, out of the list of our competitors, we have the largest achievement gap. We have the lowest support-staff ratio, okay? And I'll give you all of these numbers, okay? Naperville, a super-well-known, high-performing district, okay? They have big gaps, but they have better student support ratios. Elmhurst, big gaps, not as big as ours, but better student support ratios. I'll go ahead and send you a snapshot of the 11th-grade testing that we do, and you guys can have a really clear understanding of how you can pull aggregate ISB data to better understand what we're actually doing right and wrong.
Next up, Melissa Atterbury.
Hello, my name is Melissa Atterbury. I'm the president of the Barrington Education Association. I wanted to take a moment to give a shout-out to our special education teachers, assistants, related service providers, and counselors. These dedicated professionals make up 29% of our staff. All educators serving our students that need specialized education play a crucial role in fostering an inclusive learning environment. They not only support our students directly, but they also advocate for them in all spaces and in all places in the district, and teach others to do the same. As our student population has evolved and mental health has become a growing priority, our sped teams have continuously rigid to the challenge, supporting both students and their colleagues. Let's take a moment to celebrate the important work that they do every day. We are joining with the BSEO, and we will wear red on Friday, March 7th, to show our gratitude and support for these amazing people. Instead of Red for Ed, we want to do Red for Sped, and we hope that the board and the parents will join us. The BEA and district have been working together for the last six years to develop a workload plan which more accurately measures all of the components of the Special Educator's Day, understanding that different roles have different areas of emphasis. I want to draw attention to the role of social workers and crisis management. I don't remember crisis calls ever being a thing when I started teaching over 20 years ago, but it is a near-daily occurrence in schools today. Very often, our social workers are on the front lines when it comes to de-escalation and emergency response. In comparing data from the Illinois School Report Card from last year, I see that compared to our other five-unit districts we use for comparison in our contract, we are last when it comes to student-to-social-worker ratio at 458 to 1. According to the National Association for Social Workers, the recommended ratio for student-to-social workers in a school setting is one social worker for every 250 students. And to give this ratio a little more context, in this comparison group of six-unit districts, Barrington has the highest percentage of students with IEPs at 17.9%, with one in every four students having a documented disability. Couple this with the national statistics of one in three students battling anxiety, and it is easy to see the importance of having more social workers here in Barrington. I am confident that the work we are doing in the workload committee will shed light on the heavy loads that all of our special education staff carry. I hope the district is committed to allocating FTE to areas of need. I would love to implement any aspects of the workload model that we have ready ahead of the 2026 deadline. Recruiting and retaining strong special education staff is crucial, as we balance a teacher shortage with growing student needs. Let's make Barrington the place to be for our special education staff. Please wear red on Friday, March 7th. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, that concludes our public comment. We'll move into Dr. Winkelman's report. I think you're going to touch on, well, tonight, we'll touch on many of the things, and you'll probably touch on some other that are in your report tonight.
Thanks, Jean. You can go to slide one, please. All right, so to begin my report tonight, I'd like to start with an update from our last meeting and share a little bit of an update on safety and security. We learned that one of our former District 220 students, with the aid of some of our current high school students, was able to get into Barrington High School, and as a result of that, our administration and security team have investigated that situation, and we have made a number of immediate changes to provide greater security and more restricted access to our high school campus. In addition, we have a number of additional safety features that we are currently looking into and purchasing, and we will be installing in the coming weeks. So just felt it was important that we did have a security situation occur, and I wanted our board and our community to know that we're taking immediate corrective steps to try to make our buildings even more secure than they are today. Next slide, please.
Attempting.
There you go. So it's Illinois Five Essentials time. We've had a number of presentations throughout the school year on the topic of school improvement. We've shared data and performance. We also collect information annually, so there was, you know, a comment made earlier about making sure that we're surveying the community. The Five Essentials is the annual way that all districts, ours included, across the state, are able to gather information. So what is the Five Essentials Survey? It's a survey that identifies five indicators that lead to improved outcomes for all students. The five areas are effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involved families, supportive environments, and ambitious instruction. And the survey is actually taken by several groups, so our students participate in the survey, our staff participate in the survey, as well as the parents. So our principals right now have sent information out to their parent communities. I'd like to highly encourage our parents to participate. There are a number of questions that are related to the five categories to help us gather that information and then continue to plan improvements for our district based on the information that we receive. And that's open through March, through the end of March. Next, I'd like to provide an update on special education. So in addition to district-wide feedback, like a tool through a Five Essentials survey, we also gather feedback periodically, looking for information for specific purposes or with specific groups or programs. This spring, in collaboration with our parents, we will send out a specific survey for all parents with a child that participate in special education. The feedback gathered from the survey will help us update and redesign our Special Education Parent Advisory Council that will be reintroduced this coming fall with the start of the 2526 school year. The parent council will provide monthly meetings next year that will alternate between advisement and collaboration with the school district, as well as alternating then with parent-university sessions that will help provide information on topics of interest identified by our parents. I would encourage our parent community, as was noted, it's a large group in our district, to please keep an eye out for that survey that's going to be coming out in April, and please consider participating. There are a lot of things that make Barrington 220 a special place. I say that all the time. I'd like to share a few examples with the board tonight. We are very fortunate to have many organizations and clubs in our community that provide support and enhance the educational experience for our students in a number of ways. Last Friday, our local Rotary Club organized a reading experience for elementary students called Rotary Reads. And, you know, our school board has consistently identified really wanting to make sure that we have a strong community engagement component, and I thought this was another example of one of those connections that exists in our community, of another way for those partnerships to come alive and invite individuals into the schools to participate in meaningful ways with our students. So big shout-out to our local Rotary Club for annually providing that for our students. Next, I'd like to comment a little bit on the Impact Award. So the Impact Award is an opportunity for our 12th-grade senior students to recognize a teacher, staff member, counselor, administrator, coach, bus driver, really, any educator in District 220, that the student feels they had a positive impact on their experience during their career in Barrington 220. Once the seniors select the individual, they then have an opportunity to actually present the award to the educator, along with an invitation for that staff member to join them as their special guest at our Barrington High School graduation. graduation ceremony. The nominations just opened up. You may have seen this. We, we just started to communicate through social media and other channels, and the students are hearing about it in their classes at the high school, the seniors. But I'd like to encourage all of our students in the class of 2025. Some of you may be here tonight for civics class, but I consider participating and recognizing a teacher. Next slide, I'd really like to thank our maintenance and grounds. It is Maintenance and Grounds Workers Appreciation Week, and this, you know, is an opportunity for us to express our gratitude for the outstanding service that our team members provide every day to ensure that our facilities and our grounds are well-maintained, they're aesthetically pleasing, and they're inviting for our students every day when they arrive to, to school. So big, big shout out and thank you to our Maintenance and Grounds workers. Next slide, please. The month of March this year also marks the period of time that many of our students will be celebrating Ramadan. The holiday is a month-long period of fasting, prayer, charity, and evening meals at sundown. In alignment with our strategic objective to provide inclusive environments for all of our students, our schools will be incorporating ways to respectfully accommodate our students that are celebrating Ramadan. We recently discussed this topic at one of our district equity team meetings, and so I know some of our board members were able to attend. You, you may touch upon that at your committee report in a little bit. Hopefully I didn't steal all of your thunder there. And then lastly, we have a recognition. I'd like to recognize Dr. West for her recent recognition by the Illinois State Board of Education for Those Who Excel program. The annual program honors educators and administrators who have made significant contributions to their schools. Could not be more proud to recognize Dr. West this evening. I want to share a quick story, and sometimes that helps illustrate the point, and just the positive impact that Dr. West is providing at North Barrington. This fall, our executive council team, the, the genius bar over on the side, we visited every school throughout the district because we felt it was important that we maintain those relationships with our, with our school staff. And when we visited North Barrington Elementary, we, we opened it up. At every school, we stopped and said, just tell us about what's going on, share some thoughts or ideas, you know, for us to, to, you know, hear what was currently, you know, taking place. When we visited North Barrington, there were a number of teachers and staff that wanted our team to know how much they respect and appreciate Dr. West and her leadership at North Barrington Elementary School. So congratulations to Dr. West, and thank you for all you do at North Barrington.
That concludes my report.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Wow. That's awesome report. Any questions or comments from the board?
Or any thank yous to Dr. West?
Yeah, I was thinking maybe even a photo. That would be good. I, I had just a couple of comments, just
Sure.
A shout out to the Maintenance and Grounds workers. I mean, I just really appreciate you, and I think everything looks fantastic, and it's always in a safe condition for our students and staff as well. So really appreciate you. You mentioned the special ed. I think last, two weeks ago, you talked about we're going to have a presentation that's going to be in the month of, in April or May?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So just make sure we anticipate that, that's coming too. That's great. And please, please fill out the survey to our parents and families. And thank you also for the safety update. Really appreciate your hearing about, knowing that our schools are taking measures already to make sure they stay safe. It's a very, very important.
Welcome. I'm pulling up right now. I'm trying to do double duty here to actually say the date that we're going to provide the update for those listening at home. So if you give me a second.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I just wanted to say to seniors out there, the Impact 220 Award, like at graduation last year, there were some teachers there and their hearts were just warmed that they made a special place for you and kindergarten teachers, middle school teachers, to be recognized as somebody who made a difference in your life was, it, it made their year. So I encourage you to find those special teachers and thank them. It's really, really a nice thing. And it's great.
For those who want to mark their calendar, May 20th will be the Special Education Department update, and it will include a review of programs, current things going on with the services provided, as well as a data portion. So Dr. Ernst is already planning, so we will be able to touch on those things as well.
Does anybody want to say anything about Dr. West? Anybody else want to say anything about Dr. West?
Yes, I would love to. I think all our awesome staff is here to support Dr. West. She has made such an impact on not only North Barrington, but I think the entire community of 220. We have grown so much. Our expectations are held so high, and that follows through obviously with our student expectations as well. And I think that all of us are just beyond blessed and thankful to learn and grow, which is such an amazing thing.
You want to do a photo?
Yeah, sure. Lisa, would you like to say anything?
Well, yeah, say something. We'll come around. There's a microphone right here.
Would you like to share anything?
Yeah.
First of all, I just want to thank Dr. Winkelman. That was very kind. I'm humbled and honored to be here. And for those who nominated me, thank you very much. This award actually means a lot to me because it is, though, there are several awards that are for those who excel, and this particular one that I was recognized for by ISB comes from those colleagues that I work with, leaders I work with in the school community. And so thank you, school board, for giving me this time. And of course, thank you to North Barrington. Not going to look that way. I'll get emotional. It's very kind, and I couldn't do it without all of those that surround me, and I couldn't do it at all without the students and school community and staff at North Barrington and in 220. So thank you very much.
Congratulations. Do we have any North Barrington alumni in the house, all the students here?
No, none.
Oh, my parents.
It's not the end of the world. I'll try to remember. It's just annoying.
report?
No.
Okay. Let's go to board committee reports. Do we have any updates?
Hey, did you want to talk about finance?
So our finance committee met today prior to our official board meeting. There are going to be four things that the board as a whole is going to be taking up at our next board meeting. We discussed two resolutions that will be brought to the full board at our next meeting. One is to allow our legal counsel to continue intervening in proceedings before the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board. It's through that process that we make sure that the school gets, you know, the money that should be allocated for your kid's education. The other is to enable us to continue participating in the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund Plus, ISD, LAFP, which supports our district's financial strategy. These resolutions have been brought to the full board in the past, and it's due for a refresh. So we'll be bringing those to our next meeting. Additionally, there are going to be two food service-related resolutions that we're going to be discussing at the next board meeting. Quest is completing its first year of a five-year NSLP, National School Lunch Program Contract, and we have received a lot of very positive feedback. Their renewal for this next year includes a 3.6% increase, and it's as limited by the contract with cost of living, and we have, you know, some good floors and ceilings to protect us and to protect them. We also discussed breakfast and lunch price increases as required to ensure compliance with the paid lunch equity. There's national rules on how we set our prices. So as a result, the recommendation is going to be to increase breakfast by 10 cents and lunch by 25 cents. These recommendations will be brought to the full board, and we can discuss further at the next board meeting. Lastly, we got an update. The district continues to maximize fee collections through its debt recovery process, significantly reducing outstanding balances, while also planning to discuss DECEB issuance at the finance committee perhaps this, this fall, targeting a spring 2026 issuance. So there'll be no DECEB for this tax year, but we'll be talking about it for the next tax year. And, you know, well, that's, that's a long way away, but that was something we just, as an update, was brought up today. So. And if I could just piggyback, I was also at the Social Media Awareness and Digital Citizenship Committee meeting. That was last week. This is the parent, student, and faculty group. And we, this is our third meeting now. So the Social Media Awareness and Digital Citizenship Advisory Committee held its meeting on February 25th, 2025. During the meeting, each committee member met in one of seven subcommittees and discussed insights into research specific to their topic. We were broken up into seven committees and subcommittees, and we, we had a nice, robust group. Our group had educators, parents, and students. So it was, it was a very, very enlightening discussion. And then we participated in a variety of activities that allowed us to identify and prioritize the next steps for each of our groups. We want to, you know, keep moving. We, we want to keep making progress. Each subcommittee group presented their work to the entire advisory committee. The next two committee meetings will be held Tuesday, April 1st, and Tuesday, April 29th, to continue working on the topics established by the subcommittee groups. So again, it was a very fruitful meeting, and I'm excited for our next meeting to continue the work.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other updates?
Yes, our district equity team met, and Katie and I had the honor of being there. Katie's going to kick us off with a couple of professional development updates. We're teaming. I love it.
Okay, so yes, we actually covered a lot. First was the February 14th Institute Day that was professional development related to cultural proficiency that our teachers went through, focused on identity and using diverse teachings as part of the evaluation process in the classroom. I, from my understanding, we had great feedback from that, from our teachers. And secondly, we talked about the Uofirst professional learning that will be taking place next for our classified staff. Certified, yes, classified.
And we had a Ramadan communication that was shared with our, our district leadership team, and Dr. Winkelman referred to this. And what I think our team really appreciated about this, it wasn't just the, hey, it's Ramadan. It was really an informative way for teachers in our, our district to say, okay, well, there's a good segment of our students who are going to be celebrating Ramadan from February 28th on. This is how we can accommodate them. You know, they could be, you know, a little bit hungry or something, or, or, you know, have different emotions during the day because they're waking up early before sunset to eat, right? So I think that cultural awareness here is really important, and I think key to fostering belonging in our school district. So I think we are really encouraged by, by that. So we've, some of you know that I am a proud station parent, but at Prairie for the last few years, Mr. Lobbins, Brian Turcot, Nate Rouse, they've been just developing this phenomenal student belonging group for the last few years. It's really a cross-section of Prairie students who get together periodically to talk about how do we make sure that we're inclusive of all of our students? How do we foster belonging in our schools? And that's a high value that we hold as a board, and we're looking at launching even more. We're hoping at station and some other schools for the 2526 school year. So that was something that we discussed. And then there's a couple of events that we highlighted as a team that we want the community to know about. Our amazing library, which we partner with quite a bit, they're holding their first annual Lit Fest this Saturday. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. It's free, and there's going to be four different sessions. Those of you budding and aspiring authors, there's a Paths to a Literary Career session, a session on the power of diverse voices, and there's a keynote with Sinali Dev, who's a bestselling author. And then there's another session on Paths to a Literary Career. So highly encourage you to check that out, and I'm hoping we can maybe include a link to that in our board communication as well. And the second thing that we wanted the community to know about is a QPR Suicide Prevention Training. So a lot of us have heard of CPR, cardio-pulmonary resuscitation. QPR stands for question, persuade, refer, and it is training around suicide prevention. So some of our community groups, Be Strong Together, Ascension Illinois Behavioral Health, and the Barrington Area Library, they're partnering at 10:00 a.m. March 19th to hold a training that is free and open to everyone as well. And so wanted to highlight these two events coming up, and it was a great meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
I would just add that I've been to that QPR, and it's really worthwhile. And, you know, you never know when you're going to need these skills when somebody in your family or a friend of your child is sad or suicidal, and you, you need to know the right words to say, and it's hard to do, and you practice it at this event. And it's, it's very worthwhile. So I would encourage people to sign up and go.
Is there another committee report?
Policy committee. We also met. So you'll see there are some agenda items tonight for first readings of policy. We met on the 20th, and we went over six policies. One was around our Board of Education meeting procedure, specifically as it relates to the verbatim record of closed meeting section. And then we went through five Title IX policies, which include Uniform Grievance Procedure, Title IX Grievance Procedure, Staff Development Program, Teen Dating Violence Prohibited, harassment of students prohibited. And what we're doing is really reverting back to our 2020 standard for Title IX as well. So we'll see that on the agenda for tonight. And then we'll be teaming this, or keep going?
Keep going.
Keep going. All right. Okay. I know there's been a lot of questions. We've had a lot of questions just around the implications of executive orders on our policies. And so it's just important to keep, we were reminded, it's important to keep in mind that the law is going to drive policies, including our state laws. When the law changes, we are prompted to change our policies with guidance from our legal counsel and press with the updates we, we receive from them. So it'll be a work in progress. It'll probably take some time as we continue to work through our policies based on legal guidance.
Anything?
You got it.
Awesome. Great updates. See board. And let's move to our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, on our consent agenda this evening, so a little on the lighter side, we've got closed and open minutes from February 18th of 2025 and a revised personnel report. Any questions? All right, let's do a roll call. Sandra Bradford? Yes. Leah Colister Lozari?
Yes.
Diana Clapton?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We will move on to our action items next. Do we have a motion to consider to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal due to reduction in force of, of partial year full-time educational support staff?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Again, this is
I guess I would just add that this is part one. We'll have another part in April. So this is always difficult to go through these.
Would it make sense for Dr. Winkelman just to give a short explanation for the community of how this process works? And it's according to state law, and there's dates and times for this every year.
Sure. I mean, this is an annual process, as, as we've mentioned. It's the honorable dismissal of these staff members due to reduction in force. It's, you know, it's, it's difficult. We've actually worked this year to try to make sure that we're being as thoughtful as we can, but these are individuals that, as the motion presented, were either hired after the start of the school year following that process, or they're part-time. Dr. Rivera, anything to add with the process? I don't want to read your memo, but
Yeah, we're just doing it in two parts. These individuals were hired once the school year started. And so here, we've won the process.
Okay. And should we have a physician available for them?
Absolutely.
They would be able to return? So as an overview of our presentation tonight, we will be seeking additional feedback from the board regarding the 2026-2027 calendar, which Dr. Rivera will step through, and then we will transition into a discussion and next step regarding our school improvement days. And as a reminder, our why behind everything we do is our mission statement of empowering personal excellence in every learner. And even though I love to talk about personalized learning and future readiness and inclusive education, I'm very happy and proud that tonight our focus as it relates to strategic priority alignment is community partnerships as well as communication, because that's essential to the functioning of our district. And then also rigorous academics. Although this is a picture of our learner profile and our six personal success skills, I would be remiss if I didn't take a couple of minutes to talk about the importance of rigorous academics in Barrington 2020. The balance between instructional time, professional development, and school improvement planning is indeed a challenging one. Professional development as well as school improvement planning are absolutely essential for our educators to stay current with the best educational practices and continue improving their instructional methods in order to improve student learning outcomes, ensuring a rigorous academic experience. School improvement planning gives our buildings the opportunity to design school-wide goals that focus on student achievement among the instructional priorities of the building that are meant to intentionally improve the student learning outcomes at that particular building. This time is crucial for equipping our educators with new strategies and insights that directly benefit our students. While we do recognize that this time takes away from direct instruction, we believe that investing in our teachers ultimately leads to more effective teaching, which can offset any lost instructional minutes, keeping rigorous academics at the core. Now I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Rivera, who will discuss the 2026-2027 calendar.
So our last meeting, we stepped through that a little bit. Just a reminder that this pertains to Board Policy 620 for the school year calendar. The process is, it starts with the Calendar Committee and then goes to the Labor Management Committee, and then comes here for discussion and then approval. A couple of things just to highlight is that the school year would begin for educators on the 18th of August that year. Additionally, this is a year that also has a general election, November 3rd, so that is also noted in there as well. We also have, we discussed previously, the week of Thanksgiving that would be off for students. As mentioned before, this is something that has come up because we do have a decrease in attendance during that week as well for students. It tends to be the lowest days of attendance for the year. Additionally, you know, our neighboring school districts are also doing that as well, and so we do have some concerns with childcare for staff as well during that time. Also, that was the move for consideration for the Thanksgiving being on. I also just like to note that the second semester would end May 18th, which would be before Memorial Day that year as well. And the adaption would be in March 31st, for the March 31st meeting.
Any of those?
You said the school year ends in 18, but I think it's May 28.
Yeah, the calendar you sent us says May 28. My apologies.
That's what I was just looking for.
No, that's on my notes. I'm sorry about that. I was like, my notes significantly earlier. No, no. I'm sorry about that.
I noticed on this year's calendar compared to the next two years that the early release days, there's two in the fall and two in the spring this year, but the next two years you have one in the fall and three in the spring. Is that purposeful that you, is that why you just-
So they, it just kind of is how that they fell, honestly? We were trying to-
Okay, I just, I thought maybe because the first semester's a little shorter, so you-
Yeah.
Kind of backloaded it or something.
Yeah, that is part, that is part of the-
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the addition of the, for example, for the 2026-27 calendar, you know, we also have that additional election year, so that was-
Just for the community, those four days are in the contract that we have with the BEA, the four half-days.
Yes, and I, when we transition to that part of the conversation, I will explain all of that.
Okay, I wasn't sure where we're at the conversation. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of you.
We're still at the calendar now.
Yeah. Any other questions or feedback?
I mean, I'm sorry, are we trying to discuss the calendar right now, or do you want to get through your presentation and then talk about the calendar?
Well, the presentation is, Dr. Byrne, there's really two parts, right? The first part is, yep, feedback. This is another opportunity. We presented it, presented it last-
I just don't want to jump on-
No, you're-
I mean, I, to be honest, I received a lot of feedback not in favor of the Thanksgiving week. Your parents just feel like we're just adding another whole week of school off. It only gives us two full weeks in November. People honestly weren't interested in coming back to school early in the summer. Most people are taking their time then. I, I know that we're adding the days in the beginning, but I just think from a perception standpoint, it just seems like we're giving more days off, and it just more big blocks of time. And to our parent speaker's point, that they interrupt the flow of the school year and of the education. And I personally, I just think that maybe we're catering to people who are going on a vacation, and it's their prerogative to take their kids out, but there's plenty of people still here and going to school that week, in my opinion. I, I mean, not even getting into the school improvement day, I mean, I just, we have been getting a lot of feedback on, I know we are meeting the requirements, and I know we're meeting the minutes, but it just seems like blocks and blocks and blocks of time where our kids are off. And, you know, that's the feedback I'm getting.
I agree. I think we should consider your, our return on learning for two and a half days in November, I think is going to be much richer than the two days in the summer, like coming back two days early where it's going to be mostly review, right, and getting to know. So I think that that is something that we should take into account as well. Are those more rigorous days in November in terms of learning?
I've received both. Very positive, and I've received some concern feedback as well. One thing I was worried about was, okay, so we seem to fall where we could take that Thanksgiving week off pretty easily, but I went and looked at a couple years ahead to see when that 20th might not allow for us to add days. I didn't do the whole math on the whole calendar, but if we are going to continue considering doing that, I'd like to see us, you know, look at the next five years out, or, you know, I guess seven years out or something, just do a mock calendar to see if it's even possible, because it's one of those things where if we do it, and then we stop doing it, or we do it some years and not other years, it's going to be problematic.
So to your point, Sandra, we'd be starting even earlier in August?
Well, our policy says, I believe, we don't start anything earlier than the 18th.
Right, but we would have to.
Well, we either have to update the policy, or we would not be able to do it. I don't know. I didn't do all the whole math on the calendar. I just looked to see the 20th, like in the year 2028, the 20th is on a Sunday, so we wouldn't be able to do it in two years.
Yeah. I was just trying to clarify. I get it, yeah.
Yeah. So the 20th isn't always going to fall conveniently for this. So that's something else I'd like to see if we're going to continue to consider. But I'd like to hear what others have to say as well.
That makes sense, because we want to try to be consistent in the future, which is why we've run into a few things in the past where we're going past, you know, the holiday at the end of the year, or we're trying to end before. It was kind of, you know, I think the high school didn't really want to end after the holiday, but we didn't want to have graduation on the holiday weekend, so there was kind of a, you know, ribbon tape. And the rules about Election Day have changed a little bit, like, do we see what, you know, look in the future and know if, even if they say we can't have elections on school property, will we still have the day off for people to vote? Like, I don't know what the thoughts are in Springfield on that. I don't know if that's, if there's any indicators about that, or if we're going to just not know, which is probably the answer.
Well, when there's a general election, we cannot hold school that day, right?
Presently.
Presently, yes. Presently, right.
It's being, it's not being contested, or they're advocating to not have that, correct?
Yeah, I think there's, those conversations are happening at the state level, just like we're having local conversations about what's the impact on Election Days, use of our school sites and so forth. It's playing out at both.
Yeah.
So I'm hearing feedback from the board, requests for our team, because remember, as Dr. Rivera mentioned, you know, the action item for this is March 31st, so tonight is another opportunity to get feedback from the board. One of the requests is, you know, mock up some calendars, see how long it would go before it would become a situation where we would actually have to amend policy in order to make the contract work. Is that feedback from the board? Is that a request that the board would like us to take a look at?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm seeing heads now.
Yeah. We got it.
Just another, just, I know I asked this last meeting, but just so the community knows, who's on the Calendar Committee?
So it's a combination of administrators and both union membership, so the BEA and the BSEO.
So I'm wondering if there's a constructive way to ask for community input that might be a, you know, do we have a hearing at the next meeting and say, come tell us what you think? Or do we say, email us? Or I don't, I'm just wondering, is there a, you know, without overtaxing everybody, is there a way to invite community feedback in a positive, constructive way?
Let me ask this slightly in a way. I know we said we were going to vote on this on March 31st. Is there some reason we have to vote on it on March 31st?
The only stipulation is it's 60 days, right?
At least, though.
Right, there's a minimum, like you can't vote on it until 60 days have occurred. So that would be the first opportunity.
Okay.
I'm going to ask a different question that you may be heading towards.
All right.
See if we're aligned. So Leah, you were giving some possibilities of how we may be able to gather additional input. Would the board like our administrative team to look for ways that we could gather that feedback from the community?
Yes.
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 So we'll also work on that, and we'll bring some suggestions back to the board for consideration, because there is, there's a lot of ways. You know, you could do a hearing, you could do a survey, you could do-
Well, and we're not going to please everyone, right? Let's be-
No, that's the problem. We're going to get 50/50, and that's going to be-
Let our administrative team work on, one, coming up with some concepts of how we may gather it, and then bring that back to the board, and then we can see where the board's interest is, if you'd like us to move forward with gathering something more formally from the community. We have been, to Katie's point, receiving some feedback from the community, because that's what this process entails. That's why it's not a, we discuss it and vote on it the same night. There is an opportunity for this to be a discussion item over a number of meetings. You know, we blasted it out in the newsletter. We intentionally put it as the very first item in the board newsletter last time, so that even if you didn't scroll down to read all of the awesome information, you would definitely see the calendar. So we're trying to be transparent. We're trying to take those extra steps. We certainly can do more.
Maybe we can get over the fear of surveys in the community, too.
Questionnaire.
Did you hear me slide?
Questionnaire.
Survey word?
Come on, I'm just saying.
Okay. So thank you for that feedback. We can definitely work as an administrative team to bring some possibilities back.
I think as long as we're transparent with the survey feedback, I think it's fine.
Maybe even a survey to, I don't know if that, this doesn't really impact everybody in the community, but it does impact those with kids in school. So we've done some things through Infinity Campus and things like that, too, where it's controlled a little bit, just to make sure we've got some scientific results.
Yeah, that's right.
And not homecoming, clean, or whatever.
No, but it's also going to affect the kids, the families who are going to have kids, you know, so I'd like to know the parents of the two, three, and four-year-olds. I, it's not going to be as easy to get, but, you know, the parents of the juniors and seniors, that's important, but not as important as the ones that are going to be actually, you know, dealing with the next four or five years of calendars, so.
Yeah, we'll work as an administrative team to effectively and efficiently gather the appropriate protection.
And we'll work with our associations, because this is a process that was described, that there is a process, there are meetings that do occur annually before it gets to this point for board consideration. So we'll go back and work with the BEA and the BSEO as well.
Great.
Excellent.
Is there anything else the board would like us to consider? Okay. Well, as always, if you think of something else, please let us know, but we'll start working on these. And then March 18th is our next meeting, right?
No, March 18th.
Yeah, yeah. We can bring some updates back to the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're not done yet.
That was just part one.
Just the warm-up. Yeah. Part one.
Okay, so now we will transition into the school improvement day portion of the presentation. To step you through a timeline, we would like to remind the board that in the 22-23 school year, we are in contract negotiations with the BEA. During that time, any discussion as well as decision impacting the calendar was done so using the ISBE guidelines from that school year. ISBE has made modifications to several of the guidelines for the 2024-2025 school year, which we will discuss more on upcoming slides. Lastly, as it relates to the calendar, our district submits to ISBE, since we are a unit district and ISBE only allows one calendar submission per district, we always submit one consolidated calendar to ISBE and is submitted multiple times throughout the year. One calendar is submitted prior to the beginning of the school year, which serves as our proposed calendar, and then an amended and final calendar by the last school day of the year. This gives the school district the opportunity to ensure the full school year calendar is accurate in terms of both coding as well as how our days are used. So for example, with the e-learning days that our school district has utilized this year, we will submit prior to the last day of school an amended calendar that reflects the use of those e-learning days, because at the beginning of the year, when we submit a proposed calendar, those days are not reflected, because we don't know if and when we're going to need to utilize those. As a reminder, this is the first year of implementation of our school improvement days, and we have four days that impact release times, three of which are school improvement days, and one of which is parent-teacher conferences. Currently, our student day on those days is two hours and 45 minutes, and the release times are reflected on the screen. So elementary is 10:45, middle school is 11:37, and high school in Barrington transition is 11:15. And as a reminder, our early childhood students are not in attendance on these days. So now we'll transition into some information on instructional minutes. Recently, we have received inquiries regarding the length of the student day on school improvement days. When we went through the process of establishing school improvement days, we followed the 2022-2023 ISBE guidelines and the concept of banked instructional minutes. A district may qualify for a half-day school improvement day by providing an instructional day in excess of five hours, which is 300 instructional minutes. At any time above and beyond the 300 minutes, those may be banked to accumulate 120 minutes, at which time the district qualifies and may schedule-
that school year. ISB has made modifications to several of the guidelines for the 2024-2025 school year, which we will discuss more on upcoming slides. Lastly, as it relates to the calendar, our district submits to ISB. Since we are a unit district and ISB only allows one calendar submission per district, we always submit one consolidated calendar to ISB, and is submitted multiple times throughout the year. One calendar is submitted prior to the beginning of the school year, which serves as our proposed calendar, and then an amended and final calendar by the last school day of the year. This gives the school district the opportunity to ensure the full school year calendar is accurate in terms of both coding, as well as how our days are used. So for example, with the e-learning days that our school district has utilized this year, we will submit prior to the last day of school an amended calendar that reflects the use of those e-learning days, because at the beginning of the year, when we submit a proposed calendar, those days are not reflected because we don't know if and when we're going to need to utilize those. As a reminder, this is the first year of implementation of our School Improvement Days, and we have four days that impact release times, three of which are School Improvement Days, and one of which is parent-teacher conferences. Currently, our student day on those days is 2 hours and 45 minutes, and the release times are reflected on the screen. So elementary is 10:45, middle school is 11:37, and high school in Barrington Transition is 11:15. And as a reminder, our early childhood students are not in attendance on these days. So now we'll transition into some information on instructional minutes. Recently, we have received inquiries regarding the length of the student day on School Improvement Days. When we went through the process of establishing School Improvement Days, we followed the 2022-2023 ISB guidelines and the concept of banked instructional minutes. A district may qualify for a half-day School Improvement Day by providing an instructional day in excess of five hours, which is 300 instructional minutes. At any time above and beyond the 300 minutes, those may be banked to accumulate 120 minutes, at which time the district qualifies and may schedule a half-day School Improvement Day. Once that day has been scheduled, the bank time resets back to zero, and then an additional 120 minutes must be banked prior to scheduling another half-day School Improvement. At that time, there was no length requirement for the student day on those days outlined in the ISB guidelines. ISB has since updated their guidelines to state that the student day on a School Improvement Day needs to account for three hours of instructional time. After consulting with both our legal counsel and the Regional Office of Education, we are needing to amend the remaining two days this year to ensure we are compliant with the three hours of instructional time. Therefore, pending board approval tonight, our student days on March 20th and April 17th will shift to 3 hours and 15 minutes. The 3 hours and 15 minutes accounts for any passing periods at the secondary level, ensuring three true hours of instructional time and activities. So again, on the screen, you will see the shift in instructional times. We will work with our building leaders and transportation, and our Transportation Department to ensure a smooth transition to these amended times. Moving forward for the 2025-2026 school year, all four dates will have a student day reflecting 3 hours and 15 minutes. So as it relates to communication, bringing us back to our strategic priority of communication and community partnerships, upon conclusion of tonight's meeting, a communication will go out to all families from our Communications Department, and we will also work with each of our buildings to ensure both common, as well as consistent communication throughout the district. And as it relates to next steps, the board will take action tonight on a memorandum of understanding with the BEA, reflecting the shift, ensuring that we are ready for the March 20th date. As we amend our, and prepare for our final calendar submission to ISB, we will ensure our calendar is both accurate and aligned. At this point, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I just, thank you for, okay.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for this. So, so we had two days that were 2 hours 45 minutes, and to be in compliance, we need two additional days that are 3 hours and 15, and that...
Yeah, the two remaining days.
The two remaining days. And then next year, we'll have four days that are 3 hours and 15.
Correct.
So are we, so we're still in compliance with the additional two days, right?
Correct.
Okay. But it sounds like we'll have more instructional time next year on those half days, or early release days.
More instructional time for 3 hours and 15 minutes.
15, yeah.
For the two that remain this year, so March 20th and April 17th.
And then we'll have four.
And then all four next year will be 3 hours and 15 minutes.
Right. But we're still in compliance this year, even though we have fewer minutes compared with next year. Okay. And I imagine the BEA was pretty flexible in, in, with this MOU, so thank you to the BEA as well.
I know that you, I thank you again for this explanation. I know you've already stated it, but can you just reiterate again why we chose to have School Improvement Days?
Yes, absolutely.
Getting timed, sorry.
Okay.
Forget to say. So professional development and school improvement planning are essential
for our educators to stay current with the best educational practices and continue improving their instructional methods in order to improve our student learning outcomes, ensuring a rigorous academic experience. School improvement planning gives our building the opportunity to design school-wide goals that focus on student achievement among instructional priorities of the building that are meant to intentionally improve student learning outcomes. This time is crucial for equipping our educators with the new strategies and insights that directly benefit our students. While we do recognize that this time takes away from direct instruction, we believe that investing in our teachers ultimately leads to more effective teaching, which can offset the loss of any instructional minutes. So keeping that rigorous academics at the core. Do other districts utilize these?
Yes.
Is it best practice?
Yes.
Did we do it like five or 10 years ago, or is this a newer concept for education?
Well, School Improvement Planning is not a newer concept, and I would defer to somebody who's been in the district longer than I have to accurately answer that question, but School Improvement Planning, improving student learning outcomes, rigorous academics, is best practice, and there is a lot of empirical research that supports the implementation of School Improvement Planning efforts.
Are we pretty consistent with the number of days we have versus some of our peer districts?
Yes.
Yeah. And just to explain to the community that we have a contract with our educators, with the BEA, that, that talks about the needs for all of these different categories you're talking about, and those half-days are part of the contract. And so this is something that we've agreed to for a number of years, so we can't just kind of change it if parents are unhappy with it.
Right. I had a, I had a kind of a separate thought. I'm just going to say it. You guys can tell me to be quiet. We'll talk about it later. But as we're considering going out and talking to our, our parents about the calendar, we've also had a number of positive and negative responses to having e-learning days on our snow days. Would this be a good time to ask that kind of a question, too?
I, I think it's warranted. I mean, I've definitely gotten some feedback on that as well.
Yes, as we were talking, I thought about that.
I do. I think it would be very, I would like to make it very clear, because I think that sometimes people think, I, just like, I don't think adding a day or two on at the beginning of the year will be as productive. I'm not sure that adding a day or two on at the end of the year will be as productive. So I want people to understand that if we don't take a e-learning day, that does mean one more day going to end. So I, just as long as that's, I would for sure think we should ask, but I want to make people to know that that's the caveat.
Also, just piggyback on that, we are changing how we're going to be doing e-learning days. We instituted more rigorous planning, which is not going to start till the next school year, unfortunately. So, you know, for parents to say, well, I'm not really happy with what we've done this year, we're promising things will be more robust next year.
Yeah, and if I might add, because we're in the final year of our three-year approved plan, and stepped through the process to renew our plan for an additional three years, as we did step through the process, we did develop a set of e-learning priorities that we are committed to implementing, as well as a requirement to embed synchronous instruction into the learning experiences, as well as attendance taken on that day, and expecting that students engage in learning experiences during that day, or that, to every period at the secondary level. And as, we talked a little bit about this the last time we presented, but we are launching an e-learning, professional learning team that Melissa and Sandra and I had our first meeting this morning to plan for what that, those meetings are going to entail, and who needs to be a part of that team, because we are going to be launching a resource hub to not only support our students, most importantly, to make sure that they can access an effective e-learning day, and support our teachers and staff in designing and implementing appropriate lessons that include high-quality instructional practice with their use of synchronous instructional time, and also ways that we can support our families, not only in accessing the e-learning platforms and activities, but how they can be a support along the way. And so we will have representation from all of our stakeholder groups on those teams, and we will have that information and resources ready to launch prior to the beginning of the 25-26.
Well, and I think that's where some of the confusion's coming from, because we've been talking about this for so long, and I got to be honest with you, that's not happening now. Like, on e-learning days, my kids are done in like two hours, maybe. So I think that that's where a lot of this is coming from, is the confusion, is we've been talking about this, and we're so excited for where we're going, but then it's not, I think people expected it to be happening now. So, but can I, on that note, ask you a question? So let's say something like, what happened, it was lines, right? Who had the, who had the...
First or second?
If they, like, if they didn't take the e-learning day, would just lines have to go an extra day at the end of the year? I mean, you can't, there are times where the e-learning really makes more sense than not, in my opinion. So I don't, what would happen in that scenario like that?
Yeah. So, let's say lines just didn't have school, then you would have to, they would have to make up that day at the end of the year. So one of the purposes of having an approved e-learning plan in the district for the use up to five days for emergency uses, which are weather and other reason-related, a district must utilize all five e-learning days before a school district can apply to ISB for what is called an Act of God Day, so that a school does not have to make up a particular event. So let's say we utilize all five of, and I should knock on wood before I say this.
Please.
All five of our days, and then something happened in a building, then we would have the, the ability to apply for an act of God.
So that one school wouldn't have to be...
Correct.
Gotcha.
But you cannot apply for that unless you've utilized all five of those days.
Okay.
Because you would just utilize it.
Correct.
You had four, you just utilize that as a fifth day. I understand.
I wonder if a, a more effective idea would be to wait until the resource hub is here, and then we might have, maybe we have a discussion item, we launch it, we kind of get some community feedback from that, and then hold off on that as a survey question, because we have this exciting new three-year e-learning plan coming, and, and see how next year goes, instead of asking that question now.
I think that's going to be more productive.
Yeah, come back and tell us what you want to do, right?
Mm-hmm.
At the next meeting, so.
Yeah, and, but I, kind of listening to all the feedback, that's where my, yes, our team will work on this, but that's where my brain was at, was that it, it is a little confusing, because we're talking about a new plan, but we're not implementing it now, and, right? And it, it might be odd to ask for feedback on something that you haven't actually done yet, you know, yet completed anything yet. So, these are three-year cycles, right? And so when, for our e-learning plans, those are a three-year cycle. At the end of year two, just last year, about this time last year, when we were heading out of, you know, potential winter weather, we, we gave a survey to the entire community. We had over 900 participants, you know, provide feedback. What I might suggest is, we, to Aaron's point, let's roll out the new e-learning plan, you know, that has different conditions and parameters. The experience for our students will look different. And then, instead of waiting two years, why don't we do that at the conclusion, about a year from now, at the end of the first year? So we accelerate that, we move it up, and, and do that sooner to order, you know, in order to gather new feedback, because we just gave a, a survey last year at this time, right, around e-learning, which helped inform. I think that was a very wise decision for us to send that out, because it really did provide insight and helped, you know, we talked about community engagement and being part of the process, that, that helped guide the meetings that we had this year in the last year of the plan. And so we could use that as a factor. That's just off the top of my head right now, is something that I'd, I'd like to talk with the team, and see if we can put something together.
Does that work sense?
So I still want a calendar survey, but we don't need the e-learning survey as well. I think...
You guys talk about it.
Yeah, see if that works.
Make that decision now.
Right, right.
Yep, exactly. And, and I know we, we have experienced some e-learning this year, and, and yes, knock on everything. I hope we don't have any more disruptions. But remember, I, I think it's always important for the community, just because we have the e-learning, there are times where it may make sense that no one's getting online doing any sort of learning, because the internet is out, and we've got an ice storm that's knocked out power, or we have, you know, situations that, you know, I, I can't imagine, but it may prevent, people may get a massive snowstorm for days, where it just makes sense to just call a snow day at that time. And to Dr. Byrne's point, that, that does add on, you know, and so different years will, will necessitate, I just want the community to really understand that it's not a given that they're all going to be e-learning days. I really want to stress that.
Yep.
I still have the ability as superintendent, based on the conditions, to just make that determination for our policy.
Two decisions.
Yes.
On, on this inclement weather days.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else, Board? All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, you're welcome to stay. Board, we need to go back and, and actually redo the first action item that we did, because it was not educational support staff, but it was educational certified staff, I should have read. So if you will bear with me, I'm going to ask again for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal due to reduction of force of partial-year, full-time educational certified staff.
Do you want to ask your people to amend it?
Yes.
The two that did the first?
Sure.
Who were the first? Leah and then Katie.
Is it okay to modify that?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes.
All right, so let's vote again.
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The correct motion passes. Thank you for that. So let's go back to our, our, our action item we just discussed with our calendar conversation. We have a motion to consider to approve the BEA memorandum of understanding.
Still moved? Second.
Okay. So we just had the discussion there. We've got our memo that outlines what we were just, what we just discussed, and shows exactly the language of that memorandum of understanding, which is same as what was presented. I don't want to make it sound like there's something different. It's everything that we just saw. Any other questions or comments? And thank you again to the BEA for, for your quick action on this as well. All right, let's do a roll call. Steve Wang?
Yes.
Erin Chanding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Diana Clopton?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Thank you all so much for that. Let's go to our second discussion item, which is the first reading of board policy, which is why, exactly why you're staying right there.
Yes.
You're efficient. We have, oh, let me see, we've got four or five to talk about this evening. You just want to go in order?
Yes, that would be great. Ready to get started?
So, yes, let's do policy 2, 220.
Yes, great. So, policy 2, call 220 is the Board of Education Meeting Procedure. So based on a recommendation from our attorney, we should reduce the retention period for closed session minutes. Currently, our policy is set at 60 months, and the requirement by law is 18 months. And at discussion at our last policy committee meeting, the committee recommendation was to set the timeframe to 60 months to allow for overlap with the terms of board members.
Makes sense. Are we okay to move this one to second reading?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we'll pour it on out. And let's go to 2, call 260.
Yes, so 2260 is the Uniform Grievance Procedure. So the next five policies are all related to the Title IX changes that were made in 2024, and based on the current law and the recommendation from our attorneys, we are resetting to follow the 2020 law and expectations. So the policies may be reviewed again once press releases its next issue in the spring, which is currently, we're expected to receive that sometime in mid-April. So it may be that they come back around, but it was our attorney's recommendation that we reset to our 2020 policies as soon as possible at our next meeting.
So we've just, everything we're seeing here is just to move us back to...
Yes, nothing has been changed. It is just the 2020 version of the approved policy. So the first one is 2, 260, the Uniform Grievance Procedure.
Okay. So what you're, so the orange that you're seeing crossed out, that was the 2024 version that we had adopted, and the blue that's put back in is the 2020, just for your ease of reading, a little bit of a reversal.
Okay. And so the same is true on 2, call 265?
Yes.
And 5, call 100?
Yes.
And 7, call 20?
Yes. Can I just make a comment moving forward, and maybe the situation will never, won't happen again, but given that we are also anticipating maybe changes at the federal level, I, I'm just going to suggest that I know money and time went into professional development behind making this change while it was also under litigation, and maybe we should take that into account if we ever acquire this situation again, because now we're having to retroactively go back. And I, I know we voted on it, and that is what it is, but I'm just saying that if something...
but I'm just saying that if something is under current litigation, we might want to hold off on making changes if possible. Just so we don't get into this situation. Just my two cents.
So are we okay to move to two, six, zero, the Uniform Grievance Procedure to second reading?
I just, I just wanted to ask.
Yes.
You, the cross off under investigative process?
Which policy are you in? Your two, two sixty?
Yeah, we're still in the one, yes, two, two sixty.
On page three?
On page, yes.
Okay.
And the, the part about notifying parents consists of policy seven, one eighty. So why do we need to cross that off? I mean, we still have policy seven, one eighty now. I'm just wondering why.
Because we have policy seven, one eighty. So we would follow seven, one eighty separate from these changes, but we're just resetting back to what our 2020 version was based on our attorney recommendation. So we would still follow everything within seven, one eighty because that's an additional policy. You don't have to mention seven, one eighty because it says what you're going to do. That's why it's crossed out.
Right above it in blue.
Above it in blue says what we're going to do.
Notify his or her parents.
So is, is this blue like added since we did the last?
It's just going back.
That's the 2024.
Okay, 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 I see. Just, just restating it in a different way, okay.
And then to Dr. Byrne's point, it could be we come back and make another revision because we'll do things like, like refer to seven, one eighty.
Okay.
Could be an example of something that might occur.
Okay. That's fine, I just was unclear how that.
So we're just getting ahead of press, is based on what our attorneys recommended us.
Correct. Any other questions on that one, or can we move this to second reading?
Okay, policy two, two, six, five, Title IX grievance procedure. And so again, one of the reasons that you don't see any highlights on here is because this policy was completely rewritten in 2024, so it's resetting back to what the policy was in 2020.
Are we, are we okay to move it forward? I'm not hearing any objectives, so let's.
Yeah.
Objections, let's move forward.
Five, colon, one hundred, Staff Development Program. So again, this is the 2020 version of the policy. And this came up a little bit at the policy committee, but I want to also assure the board that we are in full compliance with our other mandated trainings as it relates to staff development programs. So for example, the chronic health conditions of students, that's not Title IX related. So I want to assure the board that we are in full compliance with our, our trainings.
There could be another example of, let's come back. Right. Okay, any objection moving five, one hundred forward?
Seven, colon, two, zero, harassment of students prohibited.
Questions here? Again, just simply reporting back. Any opposition to moving this one forward for second reading? Not hearing any, so.
And the last and final policy for review tonight is seven, colon, one, eight, five, teen dating violence prohibited. So again, resetting back to our 2020 policy.
Any questions? Okay to move to second reading?
Move forward.
Bobby? All right.
I'm sorry, I have a question on seven, twenty. I know we were, there was a, there was a part that said where we crossed out guardian? Is there a?
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, is there any, would there be any opposition including guardian? Seems to make sense to me to have parent slash guardian in there.
We are on two, twenty?
It's, uh, seven, twenty, it's, uh, page three.
Under enforcement?
Yeah.
Page three?
Yeah.
I don't see a problem.
I'm proposing just adding guardian back in there, along with parent.
It does say et cetera, doesn't limit. Not a. I don't, I don't think it makes much difference, but I'll, I'll defer to the board if everybody's okay.
So you took it out just because we didn't have it in, in the 2020?
Well, it was in the 2024, but not in the 2020.
Yeah, right, okay, that's, that'd be cooler.
I mean, the probability it's going to come back again is pretty high.
Yeah.
Right, so we're going to be looking at these again. So what, what do you guys want to do? Leave it in or take it out?
I, I would like to put guardian back in. It makes sense to me to have both parent and guardian.
Any opposition?
It's fine.
All right, please put guardian back in, seven, twenty, and move it forward.
We'll make it so.
Thank you. All right. Hi, thank you, everyone. All right. Thank you. All right, our last discussion item then. Technology and Innovation Department update. You guys have been eagerly waiting.
Yes, you have.
Thinking about surveys in your head as you're sitting back there.
I know. Questionnaires.
Questionnaires. Ways to seek information.
Thank you, Board, for this opportunity to address you tonight on our annual tech and innovation program update. We have several topics we're going to talk about tonight. A little bit about the department, our One to World program, tech support, infrastructure, cybersecurity initiatives, student information systems, digital citizenship, AI. And of course, we'll end with questions and discussion. As you can see, I have three co-presenters tonight, which I'm very happy to introduce, that correspond to the different main parts of our department. Innovation and instructional technology is part of our department that is led by Joe Robinson. Technology services and infrastructure, Russ Vandermeij. And student information systems is led by Tracy Harper, who could not join us tonight. She is in Bloomington at an ISB Student Information System Conference. So we are instead joined by our new Assistant Director, Tim Woomer. So in addition to these three areas, our department also deals with four additional areas. We're with our district librarians, our elementary STEM teachers, our transportation services, and of course, our district print center at high school.
I'm delighted to tell you a little bit more about our One to One program, that obviously has been going on for a long time called One to World. After spending six-plus years at Apple, I got to see hundreds of different school districts. I could not be more proud of the program that we've built together here in Barrington. It really does what's best for kids while balancing what's best in learning and teaching with cutting-edge technology. So to keep a program like that going and heading forward, we have some pretty robust professional development training opportunities. Every time there is an option, we are offering a lot of tech-integrated professional learning. And that is focused not so much on tools, but how to augment best practices. So instead of teaching, here's this video creation app, here's a way for students to practice multilingual literacy. We've also been honored to present in a couple of out-of-district opportunities. We've hosted quite a few site visits, either through Apple or from school districts that just know we're doing innovative things with technology. We were able to present four different sessions at IdeaCon that just wrapped up in Schaumburg a couple of weeks ago. And we've been able to work with other organizations like the DuPage County Education Center and so forth. In addition, you're well aware that we are, have the Apple Distinguished Schools recognition for our high school and our two middle schools. And by next year, we will also be applying for all of our elementary schools. So it'll be nice to bring that off full circle.
Technology support, good evening. We offer a multi-tiered, uh, multi, pardon me, we offer a multi-tiered support program here at Barrington 220, beginning with our library, technology assistance. Staff, students can venture down to their library, get basic troubleshooting support or software support on, uh, any devices that they have, whether it's the iPads or the MacBook chairs. Technology support team located at Barrington High School provides support district-wide, including device management for over 12,500 devices within our district. They are also responsible for device distribution and collection, amongst other tasks that they get involved with. Technology infrastructure. While we recently put in a new phone system here at Barrington 220, replacing, that way, replaced a system that I think was first introduced in 1924.
Do you think it was time?
It was a bit long in the tooth, it was, it was due for replacement. And we were the leading provider, Mitel, at the voice-over-IP system, providing a number of nice little features for staff. So beyond that, we've also, we're in the midst of a three-year program to upgrade classroom displays. Some of these devices go back as long as I do here at Barrington 220. They're in the 15 to 20-year range. And we are replacing them with, for the most part, with 85-inch high-definition displays, coupled with an Apple TV, so that any student or staff member in that classroom can project their screen to all. And so that's ongoing, will be wrapped up within the next year, year and a half on that one. And so the next is Wi-Fi equipment upgrades. Our Wi-Fi system is huge, 700 access points throughout the district. And there are, 200 of them will be replaced this coming summertime with some of the latest and greatest features, including Wi-Fi 6E, which provides more channels, which really helps in our high-density network. So it's just getting a little bit of our old equipment up to snuggle with the rest of us. Okay, cybersecurity initiatives, this is the fun stuff here. Our staff is really getting used to our phishing training campaigns where we spoof messages, email messages from various sorts. And most of the time that our staff gets it right, they do very good at this. And sometimes they get it wrong, and we test them a little more often. So endpoint security, we use the world-leading provider for endpoint security. They provide 24/7 managed detection and response. In addition, the software we run from this provider provides us with great insights as to where we can grow in our cybersecurity posture, what we need to address now, what we can address in the future. Cybersecurity organization membership. We are members of a number of organizations, including MS ISAC, as we call it, which is part of the Center for Internet Security. We are also a member of CISA, and these are all Department of Homeland Security agencies. They provide us with some really nice tools and guidance, almost daily guidance on what's out there, what we need to be looking for, and how, how we can do better. I would be remiss if I did not mention that our internet filtering tools are aligned with the Child Internet Protection Act. This affords us the procurement of specific technology devices with, of help funding from the US federal government.
So our student information system at campus, as part of our ongoing education to approve how staff can use it, we partnered with campus to provide every six to eight weeks focused training in a specific area, such as online registration or ad hoc reporting, things like that. So staff members can really get into that area if they want to focus on it, work more about it. We also replaced all the point-of-sale machines in our cafeterias this year. So that's all new, updated, ready to go. Attendance support, we work with our team here to clarify what our attendance policies are on different cases. And that's all published on our website, the detail, very helpful information. And the other thing we've really been working on is our online registration experience, trying to get it right size. So we're collecting the right information at the right time, not asking people over and over for the same things. It's really annoying, and make it go as fast as it can. That's pretty much what we do.
Yeah, you heard Dr. Altshuler basically steal our thunder and give such a summary of the social media awareness and digital citizenship group, but I'll fill in a little color as well. One of the things that we're taking a look at is our digital citizenship curriculum and our social-emotional learning curriculum, Character Strong, to figure out the best ways for those two things to connect. We have really strong tools for building social-emotional learning, really strong tools for best practices online, but we know there's a huge overlap between those two practices, and how can we, you know, piece that together for our students? And then I just wanted to underscore the work with the Digital Citizenship Advisory Committee has entered into our next stages of wanting to start into the work. You know, Dr. Altshuler mentioned that we'll be starting into some of those next steps and action steps to, to keep the ball moving forward. And then this, this is my favorite topic of the ones that I'm talking about today. We are definitely on the cutting edge when it comes to using AI in, in our schools right now. We have a tool called Brisk for teachers right now that allows our teachers to give timely, meaningful feedback to students with some assistance of AI that's connected to learning objectives, it's connected to a prompt that the teacher has autonomy over, and connected to our standards. It's been really powerful for teachers and students that are using it. In addition, our AI task force, which is about 30-plus teachers spanning grades three through 12, are looking at some student-facing AI tools. Those student-facing AI tools allow for full teacher autonomy, full ability for teachers to see how students are using them. They have to be compatible on an iPad, and they can't do any work for students. And they obviously have to abide by all of our student privacy and cybersecurity rules. With that being said, we've been looking at a number of different tools, and those teachers just made some recommendations last week for some of the tools that best meet the needs of our students. Those teachers are, are very excited to kind of underscore that. We were given free access to a number of those tools. And the number of free accounts that we have quadrupled over the two months that we looked at them because more and more teachers wanted to use them. So it's a growing space, and it's something that we're really excited about continuing to, to grow, and we'll certainly support with professional learning down the line.
So with that, we'd love to open it up for questions and discussion.
I've got a couple of questions. So I've been hearing from parents, and I just hope this isn't putting you on the spot. The e-learning day two ago, when there were, that was that fake email that came out. Parents want to know, was there data compromised? Did information get, you know, sent to a, get, get seen by a, a bad source?
To the best of our knowledge, no. We have been working with Barrington Police that that investigation is ongoing. What we believe happened was there, there was probably another, another email list that was out there, and that was probably the one that was used because it did not go to the entire district. It just went to a small number of addresses. And again, we continue to work with the Barrington Police on trying to figure out exactly what happened there.
As best you can tell, we don't have any data compromised.
And not only that, it, it came out about two weeks after there was another student information systems, Power School, that did have data compromised. We do not use Powers. So that's another thing that, that led to that, that feeling in the community. So.
There's definitely a heightened sensitivity there within other.
Indeed.
And then another feedback I've gotten from some parents, they're concerned that by solely using iPads, we're not teaching our kids the typing. And, and just comment on that, why we're, you know, still hitting iPads for all, you know, K through 12.
So I'm going to turn this over to Joe in a second. But to open it, you may remember back when we did our device study of the 49 different areas, that was one of the two areas that did come up as one thing that people were still questioning. Is this something that we should consider changing a device over? And all of the other things the iPad does well were, they came, they came out ahead of Chromebooks and Windows devices that we looked at at the time. So that's, that's one part of it. Just the typing part of it, we do have keyboards at every single school where any student can go check one out, plug it in, and use their keyboard at any time. I know when parents, some parents I've seen, when they feel very strongly about this, they'll replace the case so their student has their own keyboard case. They just replace the district case and have the keyboard at all times. And up until now, it's, it seemed to work out well. Joe, in his experience, has, has had a lot more experience seeing other districts.
Joe, in his experience, has, has had a lot more experience seeing other districts using iPad and dealing with that, so I would love for you to talk a little bit about this. Absolutely. There's a couple of different pathways to address there. The first one is there are 11 different ways to input information into an iPad, and typing on a keyboard is just one of them, and we want to embrace all of them. Students at this age, like they are speaking to text, they are drawing, they are drawing and then have it automatically become text. We want multimodal literacy experiences for our students because the majority of the jobs in the world aren't all just typing. It's a mobile work environment. And although our jobs and, and our generation, like I feel most comfortable on this device, I see plenty of our students that are far more comfortable with a more, with a more mobile device. And so we're, we are embracing that while also offering other opportunities. The second kind of pathway I want to underscore is that a lot of the thought, prevailing thought process about needing to have a keyboard is that writing is always four to six pages of text, and it's, it's not, more and more of our assignments are multimodal, where it's podcasting, it's video creation, it's creating links and images and infographics and adding them to typing alongside. And so the reason that we embraced this device was to have that multimodal experience for our students that matches the direction that the workforce is going, but also to make sure that our teachers are giving students all of those opportunities and we have a device that supports them.
I had a question on AI. I don't really even know how to formulate it because it scares me, but could you just give an example? And you started talking about teachers using AI to give quick feedback. Like, can you give an example of what that looks like?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have some teachers that are using it, you know, no matter what grade level, third through 12, in very different ways. So I don't want the projection to be that, like, all of our teachers are, are no longer giving any of the feedback, then it's all AI. The first is that we want to make sure that anytime a teacher uses AI for feedback, that they're looking it over first. We're not trusting any AI machine to be the only one that's giving the feedback. Number two, and, and teachers have control over that, as I mentioned before, about like how they, how they write the prompt. If they're unhappy with how the feedback is being given, they can either choose to not use the, the tool or change the prompt so it is friendly or, or meets the standard in a stronger way, whatever. The second piece of it is, is right now, we're only using AI feedback in a formative way. So never on an assignment that ends in a final grade. It's meant to put a lot more of a focus on the process of learning. One of the downsides of AI is that if we don't have visibility into the process of learning and we're only grading the final result, there is no AI detection tool, there is no way to find out, did that student write that or not? So the other end of the pendulum is to take a look at what is the process that's happening right now? And if you ask teachers to give constant feedback that is only their own for each step in the process of learning, there's no time capacity for all of that. So the tool actually enables teachers to give feedback more often and help get those check-ins so that that final product is more of an accurate representation of what that student is doing.
Interesting. Thank you.
You know, if I could build on what Dr. Altshuler said, though, I mean, I always think I've been engaging with a couple of parents, and, you know, the feedback I've gotten is the kids are so dependent on the iPads. When we provide feedback to the teachers, or to the educators, I should say, pardon me, do we give them criteria as far as like, you know, these are assignments that are done on the iPad versus these are assignments that are written versus these are assignments that are, you know, typed on a computer and then sent via email? I mean, I mean, do we have that type of, do we, do we exercise that type of guidance? Or how does that work?
We offer a tremendous amount of professional development, like I mentioned, on how to use the devices, but by no means is it mandated that any teachers are only using technology. We have an incredible teaching staff here, and one of their superpowers is being able to take the autonomy that they have to figure out which assignments are best amplified by technology and which ones are best done analog. And in bringing other school districts here, when I was working with Apple to see what was going on, and then now being a part of it, I feel like our teachers do an excellent job of parsing the difference. And just to give you some examples, like in K12, when students are acquiring some background knowledge on understanding math and numeracy and understanding the value of numbers, having tactile manipulatives is so valuable to gaining their understanding. Having them only use a dynamic computer software program when they don't have sense of what those numbers mean wouldn't be the best way for them to experience that. All the way up to another end where if, if we're in AP Chemistry and students are working through balancing different chemical equations, but we want it to be authentic, having them do the experiment to practice each one of their chemical reactions is too slow, it's just, it's not enough of an experience to get at what that lesson objective is. So having apps like FET simulations that allow them to simulate different chemical reactions and then do the stoichiometry on the backend, give them more reps focused right on that learning objective.
But to your point, it provides both the, you know, active as well as, I don't know, the virtual, if you will, elements. Okay. And then I know a lot of books are now in the iPads. Do, I'm, I'm sure this is a hard question to answer, but do we have major textbooks that students can still check out that they want to utilize, like a, you know, paper document?
Some, Melissa can help us with this one, too. Yeah. Some, some. You saw her wiggling over there in her shirt.
So we recently brought the instructional materials report for board approvals for the 25, 26 school years. So those are all our core instructional materials. So to add on to what the tech innovation team has been explaining, we do have rigorous curricula at all grade levels and all content areas that our teachers are doing a great job of implementing. And with that are a plethora of print texts that are both in textbook form, depending on the grade level and content area, and others, like for social global studies, are more of those trade book-type texts. So yes, there are a lot of print materials that we use as for instructional materials as well.
Okay. And then I know I've been kind of hammering this board as well as, you know, this administration as relates to spend and, you know, investment in paper and pens and that kind of thing, as well, as well as other areas, but is, I'm trying to think how to ask this question, but we're not constraining ourselves to try and like minimize usage there, so meaning like we're trying to minimize paper usage because we don't want to spend the money. We do, we honestly are saying that we want to push students towards using digital and more virtual-type assets versus like actual physical assets. Is that kind of what I'm gleaning?
It's really about the balance of texts. So in the, in the standards for literacy, there's the pyramid for text complexity, and I don't want to get into the weeds about the type of text the students are engaging in, the complexity, both in Lexile and other rigor method measurements, and also it's about the task that students are engaged in when engaging with those texts, whether they're print or digital. So there's not necessarily a push to go towards more print text or more towards digital text. It's about the balance over the course of a student's school day and experience from pre-K through transition, because you can't have the conversation about the type of text without talking about the complexity and also talking about the task. So all three of those really go hand in hand for both our digital texts as well as our print texts.
Okay. But I guess said it differently, we're not telling educators, stop using paper.
No.
Okay. In fact, a really good example workflow that happens in almost all of our, especially K8 classrooms, would be that students are researching some sort of piece of information given by their teacher on a device while filling, filling out a physical graphic organizer, and then eventually using multiple graphic organizers to demonstrate learning by creating a video or something creative on their device. So they're, they're constantly passing between the two, often using both at the same time. And we're, our students are not sitting in front of, you know, devices only using their iPad, nor are they only in paper for the most part. They are continuously in a state of balance between the two.
Okay. And I, okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Steve, I was going to give you a real-world example. I can tell you, our son Chandler's in AP US History, and his, his textbook weighs like 10 pounds. And so he, he has it on his iPad as well. So he, he likes, and nobody dictated this to him, but he leaves his textbook at home, and then he uses his iPad version at school, and nobody wants him to see, like, we don't want to see him hunched over dragging like 60 pounds of books to school. So he does.
I'll say that was me, but yeah, I get it.
That's what our kids did.
I know, that's what I did. Yeah, yeah. So, so that's, so that's an example where he'll use the actual textbook at home, and he's more comfortable paging through it that way. And then at school, like just for easy reference, he'll use iPad, too. So things to look forward to for.
Sure. Well, I mean, yeah, I, I guess I just don't have that middle school experience quite yet. A few months.
Oh, you'll get there. I have a couple of questions around artificial intelligence as well. So I'm wondering, when it comes to, and I love that our, our district is not punitive solely with artificial intelligence, that we're, we're really trying to harness things and recognizing that this is the future. It's a lot of unknown, but tools that are really useful. I'm wondering, like, what are our guardrails when we have our task force and we introduce new apps to our teachers and students around things like, okay, how, this is how you recognize a deep fake, and like you might be tempted to create a deep fake, but this is like a responsible way to use generative AI. So I'm wondering about that piece of it. And I'm, and then I have one more question after that.
Yeah, most of our, I would say, almost all of our use is 100% academic, so creating anything like that generative at that level, that's not really where we are, that's not the pool that we're playing in. What we're doing right now is using tools that have to adhere to our cybersecurity and privacy rules. Russ mentioned SIPA earlier, but we also have SOPA and others that, these tools, even for us to introduce them, have to pass all of these rules. In addition to that, the first action of this AI task force under the direction of Ty Gorman last year was to create AI use guidelines. We have guidelines for 3.5, 6.8, and 9.12, because it's a different experience at each one of those levels. Specifically in the 9.12, one of the things that group identified is that we know AI is here, it's not the future, it's now. How can we make sure assignment by assignments, teachers feel like they have the autonomy to dictate at what level AI can be used outside in the world, because we know students are using it, right? Whether we're, you know, giving the okay for them to use ChatGPT or not, we want teachers to be able to say, this is an assignment in which we don't want any AI to be used. And that gives the teacher that autonomy to take a look, know that student's writing, and identify, this looks like it was AI-generated, can we have a conversation about this from that level? So to, to answer your question, like, we're not teaching how to use AI right now as it exists outside of our walled garden of protected tools.
Do, do we have access to those grade-level guidelines? I'd be curious to take a look, or does the community have access? Are they linked somewhere?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure where they're available, but I'd be happy to share them.
Yeah, it would be great to see that.
They are very well done.
Fantastic. Yeah, I would love to see that. And then my second question actually dovetails on your comment about, you know, if a teacher saying, seeing a paper that is potentially AI-generated, can we have a conversation? I'm wondering, like, what happens? What is the process? And this might be more in the instructional space, but for example, another real-world example, so my son watched his friend type out a paper, well, probably type it with his thumbs on an iPad, but type out a paper using his own volition, right, in research, and then their teacher ran it through, like, like some kind of ChatGPT or AI detector, and it flagged it, right, as potentially created, generated by ChatGPT. And he's like, wait, I watched him type it. And so they had to have this conversation. So I'm wondering, like, how, how does that work? Like, what is the balance? Because I know that, you know, there's the temptation there to use it, right, to use AI to write a paper, but then there's the reverse of like, wait, maybe I sound like a bot, but I'm not. So how did, like, how do we strike that balance? What are the conversations that, you know, the educators and students are having? What, like, how do we kind of sift through all this?
We certainly encourage the conversation, whether it is something that ends up being AI-generated or not, that it's a healthy to have that conversation and the teacher has a concern. As far as AI generators, none of them are real. I mean, there's nothing that can tell if something is actually AI-generated, because the idea behind the generation of the AI is that it is unique. In terms of tools that our teachers can use, however, is they have the ability to look at revision history in a Google Doc to see, like, were they typing? And then all of a sudden, there was like four pages all pasted in? Well, that's, that's something worthy of a conversation to see, see what happened there. But, you know, to your point, it's even more important that we're having those conversations and that we are taking formative assessment options along the process of writing, so that it's not all, oh, I'm looking at this product, and now as a teacher, I have to struggle to determine, did AI generate this or not? If there are all these benchmarks in between, it's clear to where, how that student got to their end product.
I definitely was encouraged to hear there was a conversation and not just, oh, like, we're going to doc you a grade because this is written by AI. Yeah.
I mean, even in the big copy paste, we do have students that prefer to write outside of Google Docs. So like, there is a logical explanation for four pages of it being pasted in. So even that is not foolproof and shines a light even more on making sure that we're keeping an eye on the process of writing.
They probably didn't use WordPerfect or DOS like we did, but I know the copy and paste thing still exists. Thank you for that.
Can I put on my social media awareness hat on and ask your comments, being on the Leaving computers at school, especially for the very youngest kids, kindergarten doesn't need to take his or her computer home, have a docking station, maybe even K through 3. So that's kind of suggestion number one, is leaving the computers at school. Suggestion number two is helping students do things other than playing on their computers on the bus ride home and, and in the cafeteria. I mean, you know, we're talking about socialization, we're talking about, you know, talking to your friends instead of, instead of communicating over, you know, the computer. I, I don't think we can have bus drivers say, everyone put your computers away, you can't have them out, but, but, but can you comment on what we can do to help these kids? Because they're on their iPads all day, even if they do get time off, to get a break from their computers and, and social media and that kind of thing.
I'd say the best way to start this conversation is just to point out, this is something we've been dealing with as a district for the entire time we've had Wonder World. This is not a new thing that we're just.
Absolutely.
Just dealing with now, or talking about for the first time. So it's always been a part of our, just our digital citizenship curriculum. Because of where things have gone, and especially, I believe, because of the pandemic, I think we all think about this topic a lot differently, which is why we wanted to take the step as a district to put together that advisory committee. And the first two things that you, you, you offered as possible suggestions, I think that's what that committee needs to, needs to deal with. We need to, as a group, come up with some great guidelines and suggestions, not just for in-school, but also for parents outside of school, and be able to offer that in various different ways for anyone in our community who would like to, who's looking for guidance on that, in that area. And again, Joe, do you have anything to add? Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that's, that's part of the reason of wanting to bring all these 60-plus constituents together is to get all those voices involved. If the district unilaterally said, no devices on buses, there's equity issues involved with that. There are families that would be like, hey, wait a minute, like, that might work for some, but not for all. And I think that's why we want to get everyone's voice heard as we consider what to do going forward. The thing that I'm most proud of is how many students are on that committee and how we immediately responded after our first meeting, realizing we don't have enough students on this committee, and we, we brought in a lot more. So thank you, Barry, for being on that committee and.
And thank you for your comment. Just wanted to kind of bring that up.
Thank you.
We're, we're aware of that issue, want to address it.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? It sounds like not.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the board does need to go back into closed session. We obviously won't be taking any further actions, but we are adjourned an open session for now. So thank you for being here.